Well, we are on a tight timeframe. I did talk to Josh Schimmel. He has a presentation for us. So this being 11 o'clock, I would, with Counselor Allen and Counselor Letterman's permission, I will call the committee to order. And we are here. I call this committee meeting as the state and local governments, state and federal government committee does have oversight over Springfield Water and Sewer as well as the Springfield Housing Authority. And I thought it'd be good to engage with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission from our last Zoom call and really try to get the residents of Springfield a little bit more involved, or rather, a little bit more informed of what Springfield Water and Sewer is working on. Several weeks ago, as we know, the residents of Springfield received a letter in their mailbox that stated that we do have the presence of a HAA5 in the water. And Water and Sewer has been working on that problem. And one of the solutions that Water and Sewer is going to be needing in order to address the problem full on is a improved infrastructure. And I believe a water filter. The details of this a little bit more than I can, but I believe the price tag of that is somewhere north of $80 million. But I will give the floor over to Josh so he can provide the committee and the council a few insights to where we are, where we've been, and where we're going to go. So, Mr. Schimmel, I turn the floor over to you.
Great. Thanks, Counselor. Glad to be here. Good morning, Counselor Gomez. Good to see you as well. First off, we have some staff on the call, one to get them some exposure, two, because they've put together this presentation. We update our board monthly on the status. And we just so happened last month to give them a more detailed update of where we are. So we're going to present that presentation to you all. And Jim Larilla, who's our Director of Water Operations, will walk you through that. But first, want to just say a couple of things again about what we've been doing with this. This is an issue that became apparent in 2018 when we got a notice of noncompliance. We've been out of compliance since that point in time, eight quarters. But I do want to be clear in the fact that the planning, the planning that is now coming to fruition started before this issue even arose. So we've had master planning going into effect and looking at what we need to do to update our facilities. And that was already underway. So I do think, I do think we're in a really good position right now. We have great results. We've done a lot of work here. And I know that from a lot of perspectives, it seems like this is taking a really long time. However, we're talking about tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of decision making. And so it's really important for us to make sure that when we make these decisions and decisions that we need to work for the next 25, 50, 75 years, that those decisions are absolutely entirely informed from real data. And if we step back, that means what we really have done on the onset of this issue, we started a pilot plant to gather seasonal data to determine what types of treatments would work. We've taken that now into the third phase, which we're finishing up right now. Additionally, we're looking at some half-plant trials this winter to optimize some of the chemical additions. So we've been really active at this. We did get, and I'm stealing a little bit of the team's thunder here, but we got great results last month. So the first time in eight quarters where every sample passed, we're still out of compliance, just based on how they average, the annual running average of those samples. So we have another sample period here coming up in a couple of weeks. And we're hoping that the weather holds and that we're going to be back in compliance here, hopefully, in a month's time or so. And again, going back, a lot of this is weather dependent. And with the changes in the weather patterns that we're seeing with more extreme events, it's just, it's a wild card for us. We're going to put a system in place that is going to be able to accommodate those changes in weather patterns and climate change, make us a more resilient utility in terms of that. And at the end of the day, everybody on this call knows what that means, dollar signs. And this is what our rates reflect, the work that we're doing. And be glad to answer some questions after this. But again, regulatory-driven compliance, new technology, updates to infrastructure that's 50, 75 years old, costs a lot of money. And we're pecking away at it. And we're trying to do it in as reasonable and informed a manner that we can. This HAA is just one example of many of the challenges that we face on a daily basis. There's other regulations, contaminants, and there's aging infrastructure that challenge us each and every day. So with that, I want to jump in and introduce Jim Larilla. Again, we have a bunch of our team here that participated in gathering this data in the pilot plant and just wanted them to be part of the presentation. But Jim Larilla, our Director of Water Operations, is going to lead the way. I'm going to share the screen. And Jim, you can just, you can just, give me one second here, folks.
I'd like to recognize Mike Fenton. Adam Gomez has joined us as well.
Okay, folks, are you seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. There you go, Jim.
Great. Thanks, Josh. Good morning, councilors. We appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on the city's water supply and the steps we're taking to comply with the haloacetic acid regulations. I've got about 14 slides that we'll go through this morning to provide an update. We'll be talking a little bit about the formation of these disinfection byproducts, what the regulations are, an update for you on the current situation in terms of organics in the raw water, our chlorine dosing at West Parish Filters, and the state of our compliance currently. Josh indicated we have some pilot plant results that are leading us to move into a half-plant trial, hopefully this wintertime. And then I'll lay out the short-term and long-term strategies for compliance. So on the next slide, this is a, just an overview and a reminder of how disinfection byproducts form. As rainfall carries organic material from the watershed forest into the reservoir, the raw water flows into the treatment plant where we filter the water. Most of the organic material is removed, but some excess material can remain. It reacts with the chlorine that we use for disinfection, and it creates these disinfection byproducts in the distribution system. These are the things that we've been talking about the last couple of years. So that's just sort of an overview of how they form. Just an update on the disinfection byproducts rule. So the regulations that we need to comply with on the Stage 1 Disinfection Byproducts Rule dates back to February of 1999. The regulation at the time allowed averaging of all the samples in the city. So we have eight sites that we sample in the past. They would have been averaged. So if you had high values and low values, they would have been averaged out, resulting in easier compliance. And in April 2012, the Stage 2 Disinfection Byproduct Rule was passed by EPA. It created a locational running annual average, which essentially is the average of the results over the previous four quarters at each location. So for each of the eight sites, we track the annual average there. So it's much more sensitive to meeting the maximum contaminant level than the previous rule. So on the next slide, I'll give you an update on the current conditions relative to organics. So it's a little busy, this graph. On the left side of the graph, you'll see rainfall in inches. And on the right side, you'll see a measurement of organics. Just a couple of things that I want to point out, that the red line represents the organics level in 2018 when we first began having the problem with disinfection byproducts and the HAAs. Back in 2018, we got about 12 inches of rain in September, and it caused that really high peak in the organics level. And as you look at the, so the red peak there, November, December, in the red line. And then as you go back over to the blue line, which represents 2019, those organic levels were still inordinately high compared to historical values. So as you can see, they continued to drift down through the course of the year. And then where we are, 2020, is the yellow line. And the organics levels have continued to drop back to what we consider more typical and normal. On the right-hand side, these levels in our water quality business are about between 0.08 and 0.1, which are more typical organic, organics levels to see in the water quality from Cabalmont Reservoir. So those levels are dropping back. On the next slide, I'll show you the current condition in terms of chlorine dose. So the chlorine dose is going up sort of the vertical side of this graph. And then this is an annual thing on the bottom. So it's got the months on the bottom. The black line is where we are, the 2020 chlorine dose. The other colors are for previous years. And what this graph shows you essentially is that we're maintaining a fairly low dose of chlorine in the system, which is resulting in really good residuals in the distribution system. So we're attaining good quality treatment. We're removing about 60% of the organics in the raw water. We're dosing at appropriate levels to keep the water safe in the distribution system. And it's resulted in a fairly good year in terms of disinfection byproducts. As we go to the news, the next slide here, the current disinfection byproduct regulatory situation. So through quarter three, we took samples on September 1st. Two types of disinfection byproducts that are regulated. The first is TTHM, which is total trihalomethanes. The current range for the eight sample stations we have across the city range from 51 to 63.5. And the regulatory limit there is 80. So we haven't really had any compliance issues with those compounds. HAA5, which we're here to talk about essentially is, the regulatory limit is 60 parts per billion. We have six sample locations that are in compliance. We have two sample stations that currently exceed that maximum contaminant level. And those readings averages are 60.5 and 63.8 parts per billion. So just barely in excess of what the regulatory limit is. So we go to the next slide. This is a lot more data for you than we can probably review or that you can even see clearly. But what I wanted to point out here is that in 2020, there's been a significant reduction in sort of the number of red, the red numbers indicate an exceedance of the regulatory limit. So as Josh had mentioned, in quarter three, the individual readings that we received from the sampling event showed that each sample station for the one round was in compliance and lower than the standard. The annual average that we measure for compliance again shows two that are just in excess of the regulatory limit. So we're coming up on quarter four with samples to be taken at the beginning of December. Obviously, we don't know how those are going to come out ahead of time. But we're trending in a, we're trending in a very good manner here. And we're anticipating good levels in December, hopefully returning us to compliance relative to the HAAs. So a good trend in terms of those. So the work we've been doing, as Josh indicated, we have been pretty busy on trying to solve the problem and working on the future. If you can move to the next slide there, Josh. We have a pilot plant, water treatment plant, that we've been working on a number of trials. Josh, I think you're on mute too. There you go. All right. Great. Thanks. So as Josh mentioned, we have this pilot plant, treatment plant that's been on site for a while, about a year now. We've been using, we've been using a number of processes to trial their effectiveness in removing organics and reducing the HAAs. So we looked at the variety of things, including a pre-oxidation process, a dissolved air flotation clarification process. And we're also evaluating a variety of water treatment coagulants, commonly used chemicals to reduce organic matter in treated water. On the next slide, if you could drill down a little bit here on this pilot plant. Josh mentioned, it's been a three-season plant. We started in October of 2019. We're currently in season three. We'll be wrapping up here in November, looking at different chemical coagulants. So season one and two, we found that this pre-oxidation process that I mentioned was ruled out as being ineffective. We had done some bench scale work with professors at UMass and indicated that might be, that might work for us and be effective. And in the piloting, we found that that didn't follow through in the process. This dissolved air flotation clarification step has been identified as the most effective process. And we've continued to study the effectiveness of various coagulants in season two and three. So as the process of the treatment plant, the pilot plant has moved on, we've gathered a lot more data that'll be used in final design for treatment plant modifications. One important thing that came out of this pilot plant process was potential short-term process improvements here at West Parish Filters using our existing filtration process. The use of ferric sulfate would be a new coagulant for us. That's shown promising and significant disinfection byproduct reduction in the pilot scale program. We're currently looking at a winter trial at half the plant production flow here at West Parish pending DEP approval. And on the next slide, we talk a little bit more about this pilot plant.
Jim, are you, are you going to see in the slides okay now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. So as we talk about this half-plant trial, what we plan on doing is using this ferric sulfate coagulant, which is a new coagulant for us again. It results in more organics removal and reduces the amount of disinfection byproducts as a result. So I've identified some dosing in the piloting that we're going to use. In the half-plant trial, essentially what we're doing is measuring water quality versus the impacts in our ability to produce water. So when you add a coagulant in the water treatment process, it creates solids that then get removed in the filtration process. If the filters can clog very quickly, then it may impact our ability to produce the amount of water that we need to produce for the city. So on a daily average, we produce about 30 million gallons per day per year. So we measure water quality versus production. Would be some of the key things that we're looking at there. We're working very closely with the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. On the half-plant trial, we have a pending permit application in front of DEP. And we're hoping for approval here shortly. It'll allow us to start a wintertime trial. So on the, on the next slide, just a review of the short-term strategies. I think we probably talked about some of these the last time we met in person a couple of years ago. We continue to optimize chlorine dosing and then chlorine and the amount that we use as a factor in the amount of disinfection byproducts. So we review that data daily using sample station mapping and live data feeds from the city as we collect information. So the coagulant optimization trials we just talked about. We have a half-plant trial using a new coagulant that's pending.
Just a quick question on this easement. I'm looking at this site plant, which is not ideal because it's not surveyed and.
Okay, I think.
Please ask folks to mute if they're not presenting.
There's, we can work with it. I just have a question about what we're doing. So the first.
Counselor, can you mute everybody?
Based on the plan is that the easement will.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So yeah, just picking up where I left off there on these short-term strategies. We talked about the coagulant trial this winter, which would be a low-cost way to have significant improvements in water quality. We continue to pay attention to our water storage time, the age of our water in the system. We reduce water storage in the winter months. And we've added mixing in the tanks to keep the water fresh as it goes to our customers. So we're maximizing this natural organic removal using the process that we have right now. Slow sand filtration process at West Parish is one that we only use in the summertime for peak production because it doesn't remove as much organic matter as the rapid sand filtration process does. So we use those rapid sand filters for the majority of our plant production, and it gives us the best water quality. And then we continue to do distribution system flushing, which aids in reducing the amount of chlorine that we need to add at the plant to keep the water safe. The capital planning process for capital improvements and construction is moving forward quite well. We're planning on a new treatment plant upgrade, which would include a 60 million gallon per day dissolved air flotation clarification process, which we talked about, upgrades to the existing rapid sand filter plant, new electrical systems and chemical storage and feed building, which would support the new process that we're adding at the treatment plant. Our schedule right now is for the design for these, the final design for the treatment plant upgrades to occur in fiscal year '22 and '23. We have about $1.9 million budgeted for the design of this treatment plant upgrade. Once the point, the design is done and approved by DEP, construction will commence and will occur in FY '24 through '27. The latest estimate on the project is about $86 million. And then looking ahead on the last slide, just to wrap things up, we're completing the pilot treatment plant this month and gathering all the data and reviewing that. And we'll commence that winter 2020 coagulant trial, sort of a full-scale half-plant trial after we receive DEP approval. If we find that the ferric trial is effective and helping us reduce disinfection byproducts, we'll then apply for a permit with DEP to switch to full-time use in the winter or spring of 2021. So it's something we're still evaluating, and we'll see how that goes through the wintertime. And we've begun design of the new process upgrades as part of our facility planning. And then we'll move into more detailed design in the next fiscal year. And that's sort of a quick summary of where we are, a bit of detail. But we're happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding that information.
Thanks, Jim. I'll just add one thing, councilors, just to point out a couple of things. The technologies that we are looking at are tried and true technologies. The coagulant trials are tried and true coagulant trials of chemicals that are used throughout the industry. So there's nothing, you know, this is meat and potato stuff. We're dealing with regulations that were passed in 1999 and 2012. And we have a plant, one plant that was built in 1974 and another plant that was built in 1909. And so this is a matter of aging infrastructure. And you've heard us say that over and over again. And just making sure as we go through the process of selecting what the next upgrades are going to be, that they're going to, they're going to last for generations. And that's what's critically important for us right now, is not to make poor investment choices.
Thank you very much. That was a very informative presentation. I guess just for clarification, in terms of just the chemical itself, the HAA5 that was found earlier this year, as of today, and as of today, where exactly are we in comparison to when the letter was sent? Is it, it's an improvement, but by how much, if you could generally?
Let me, am I still sharing? I am. So if you go back and we have, let's just see if I can. The last round of sampling, if you can see my mouse, everything is below 60. This is 60.4. I think when you come back over to where we were back in 2019 in the first quarter, you can see what the averages were here, right? So we were in the 65 up to 70 range. And you can see as we go, these are the running averages. These are the actual samples themselves. We were up into the 70s at times, 60, high 60s and 70s throughout all of this. So the numbers aren't off the charts to begin with. But again, it's the average running at, the annual running average. And for us, you know, you can see, if you go back to quarter one of 2020, all but one sample passed the OEL. And then again, right now, we're, all samples are passing the OEL, but we're still out of compliance on two of the samples. And I think that's 63.8 and 60.5. And we need that to be below 60, correct, Jim? Is that right, below 60?
Yes, that's right, Josh.
To average out.
So of the five places where you took samples, where, right now, it's two that are a little bit high.
Of the eight.
Of the eight.
Yep, two of the eight.
Okay. Now, I guess if I could ask another question before I open it up to my colleagues. What exactly are we, I mean, this is budget week at the state senate. We're passing for, the state senate is passing a $46 billion budget. What exactly are we doing on the city level? I don't know whether CJ Plant, as well as you, Josh, sit down with Governor Patrick this week. Are we offering anything in terms of some sort of funding beyond rates? I mean, is this on their plate? Do they not understand the severity of this? So that we need, we need $86 million to pay for the system to make sure that our water is clean. Are we down there this week at all, in terms of senate budget?
Yeah, no, we are not in terms of the annual budget that they pass. Where we see the need, there's a couple of different things that play out. So one, when there's an environmental bond bill, that's where we see funding and line item stuff for specific projects and municipalities and utilities. And we've, we have approached that angle in the past. And I think our next round of legislators will be glad to work with everyone to make sure that when they pass the next environmental bond bill, that we're pushing to have another piece in there for the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, which is a large regional authority that serves the greater population, not just Springfield, but all the surrounding communities. So that's where we see that funding. It's a common, you know, obviously, across the straight, across the state, utilities are hard-pressed to fund what the needs are. Everybody's got aging infrastructure. It's a national crisis in reality. So the other piece, and there's two of them I'd like to talk about real quick, is the state revolving fund, which we utilize heavily on the water and the wastewater side. And I think those are, that's the real mechanism. But again, those are loans, folks. Those are not, those are not grants. And at times, there are grants associated with a portion of that loan where we get debt forgiveness. And to that degree, we tap into every dollar that we can get from the state revolving fund. And we maximize the dollars that we can get for debt relief on those loans. But, you know, we continue to accrue debt and debt service. And that changes the rate at which we can borrow money to do other things. The SRF is competitive. The SRF has caps on what they will give you on the water side, a little less so on the wastewater side. So, I mean, we're very familiar with the SRF program. The SRF program is very familiar with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. We're one of the top users. If we don't use their money, they call us. They want us in line to use their money every year. And we do, and we leverage that to the extent that we can. But again, those are, that's a competitive process. There's rankings, projects like we just explained to you, where you're having compliance issues ranked very highly. And so we get points for being out of compliance, so to speak, that makes that more likely to get funding. And so, and then the third thing that I think is something we need to pursue is project delivery. And I think that there's a lot of different ways that we can deliver projects. Traditionally, it's a design bid-build mechanism. And I think that there are alternative mechanisms. And I think that there are alternative mechanisms to deliver projects more effectively, more cost-effectively and faster. And we've been able to pursue that in in some circumstances here at the commission. But in order to pursue that on the drinking water side, um, we're gonna be reaching out here in the next few months uh, to to look at getting some special legislation passed that will enable us uh, to do some alternative project deliveries that we can't do under the current procurement um, law in Massachusetts. Uh, we have a special act in place on the wastewater side uh, that enables us to do this. And we are, we're looking to get a similar special act on the drinking water side uh, that will enable us to really find the best project delivery method. So that's something on the horizon. And then obviously uh, for grants and other types of loans, we pursue those actively um, on the federal and state level. And uh, we've had a couple uh, smaller grants come in here in the past uh, in the past six months. Um, that, you know, they they add up and we chase everything that we can.
So. You you are in luck in that we do have a senator-elect and uh, my colleague here in the council on the, you know, the state and federal government committee, uh, who is a member. Adam Gomez, I don't know if Senator Gomez, if he wanted to add a few words or you're just hearing.
No, I just uh, uh, thank you, Counselor Curran. Um, you know, a lot of this information is uh, uh, very helpful uh, moving forward. Uh, my question or, you know, I I think uh, Josh alluded to, it was just more on the federal uh, side of things. I know that uh, myself and I think uh, Counselor Letterman, we're part of this uh, kind of movement now that's going on uh, nationally. It's called like the Water Alliance and it's asking kind of uh, you know, the federal government to help supplement. Um, you know, a lot of these uh, I guess quasi-organizations such as Springfield uh, Water and Sewer that are are finding uh, you know, tough ways to figure out infrastructure. I know that has been uh, before, I think w- we spoke about that um, we used uh, Springfield Water and Sewer, it used to be part of the the conversation, part of, you know, some sustainability that this, uh, I think the feds used to issue out some infrastructure money, um, and then from there it used to trickle down to, from the state many moons ago, I guess way before our time. Um, but essentially right now, you know, um, I know that just so recently, um, when we last met, you had stated that you did get some kind of resiliency money uh, through the federal government to to do some uh, to do some work. Um, when it came to the, not the, if, uh, I guess, I guess site infrastructure, not infrastructure, a- 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 as abroad. I know that um, what I have noticed outside of the spectrum of Springfield that there has been a lot of concern out in other towns that uh, use the same systems of water and the uptick of uh, you know, the burning of uh, you know, uh, the the water, the the price of that has gone up. I understand that there's a lot of work to try to figure this out. I know this meeting is specific behind uh, you know, the substance that is still uh, in in the water. But um, what I, what I want to do is uh, you know, I know that uh, I've, we have a a great relationship, Josh, but just more of a, more of a a champion of trying to figure out how to consistently uh, advocate the, to make sure that, you know, the burden isn't felt uh, on the consumer, uh, on the, on the consumers. Because a lot of the constituency, you know, and we've had this conversation in the past with um, with the rising uh, tax rate. It's just um, during this crisis that we're 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 under, I think that um, a lot of folks uh, are looking for a little bit of a of relief. And, you know, that stimulus package, obviously, we want a stimulus package for the people. But I think organizations like uh, like yourself, like Springfield Water and Sewer is looking for stimulus to better support um, our uh, our constituency abroad in 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 western Massachusetts. Uh, I know that, you know, consistently, specifically in the ward that I still represent, we are go, we have water mains that consistently break. I know that um, you know, uh, in downtown, we have uh, pipes that are upwards around the the age of almost a hundred years old. A- and granted, uh, you know, we have a lot of work to to get done. I just think that uh, you know, our state, our state government and also our federal government needs to step up to the plate specifically with uh, 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 when it comes to the infrastructure, because the brunt is really felt by the people right now with, you know, people being out of uh, out of employment and trying to, you know, put food on the table sometimes, a hundred and twenty dollars, which, you know, I do commend you and your your uh, your organization for putting something together of some relief. But sometimes a a hundred and twenty dollars, I wish that it it could have been consistent. But I do uh, uh, give you that where the credit is due is that you guys are trying to work with uh, with folks a- and with the L- uh, the the elderly program as well that you guys put together. So I know you guys are trying to do your best to to create that relief. Uh, but I think that the um, you know, a a lot more conversations like this, but more conversations on trying to figure out what is the, you know, the strategic approach when it comes to, you know, state uh, state uh, the state asking those environmental bills and 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 really trying to, you know, get my he- head wrapped around it once I get there in January to better uh, be a support system to make sure that we have good quality water. But at the same time, uh, good quality water that it it, that our consumers don't uh, really see the brunt of of the cost and and trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for that. Thank you, uh, Counselor Curran.
And uh, we also have a committee member, uh, Mike Fenton, uh, on the line. I don't know if Mike wants to say anything at this time or ask a question.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, no, I I I think it's pretty much covered. Uh, you know, appreciate the commission's diligence on the water quality. I think there's a lot of people that uh, continue to get some. I know we spend a lot of time talking about surprise medical billing. It feels like sometimes we have surprise water billing. Um, but that's uh, not exactly related to the, to the point about water quality. So uh, I I I would, I would yield to the rest of my colleagues, Mr. Chair.
And now we have uh, Counselor Letterman, Letterman, if you could, uh, if you want any comments or.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, uh, for calling this meeting and thanks to all the staff over at Water and Sewer Commission. I think, you know, we had held a series of meetings under the uh, Committee on Health and Human Services in uh, two thousand eighteen and nineteen when we first started seeing uh, these locational running averages increasing. And that was really helpful, I think, in in, you know, giving a a baseline education to councilors and the public um, around what the treatment process looks like and uh, you know, what the HAA five increase, you know, what it means. Uh, you know, what it poses to individuals, consumers of the water, and also sort of the reasons in which it has come about. You know, we had DEP on those uh, meetings, we're speaking with toxicologists. So I think that really gave us a good sort of primer um, in understanding this issue better. And I'm glad to see uh, the chairman call a a meeting to update us on this. Um, you know, one thing I'll say before I ask my question is, at those meetings, you know, Water and Sewer, you you rolled out very clearly uh, what you were gonna do to try to bring these down, and you have done that. Uh, so I really appreciate you following through on those efforts. Um, and I think that, you know, what I'm taking away from this is that the still uh, larger issue is, you know, needing to modernize the wastewater treatment. And to the chairman's point, you know, that that has to do with the funds that are available. So I guess my my two questions, one is technical and one is perhaps more aspirational. The technical piece was just, Josh, on that slide you were sharing, I think you're still sharing it. Um, it, the the, the two areas that are still out of compliance, those are both out of compliance uh, because of the locational running average. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, so they are testing below the the uh, levels that they need to be, but they're still out of compliance because they previously tested higher. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay, so then, Mike, my next question is, you know, you mentioned the the wastewater treatment facility that's in the capital proven project. Uh, you know, that's Counselor Gomez mentioned, you know, we've certainly uh, taken some steps to try to lobby the the federal government uh, for the funds. One of the things we know is that when the water system was built, it was funded almost exclusively by the federal government. It's now been left to local municipalities and ratepayers to rebuild it, um, you know, two generations later. And so, um, you know, we've certainly written those letters asking our our federal delegation for more support in that respect. Hopefully, uh, in this next Congress and under this next administration, we see a true infrastructure bill. But my question, Josh, is what can we do right now as the city council, in your estimation, to support uh, your efforts at the state level uh, and also at the federal level? And the other thing that comes to mind is, you know, we know that this is an after effect um, of climate change. Uh, the increased rainfall is what is causing the increased byproduct. So I'm wondering if we can't access some of the state grants around like the uh, MVP program and things like that. So basically, my question is, what can we do right now to support you guys in finding that funding outside of the ratepayer system?
So uh, all all great points by everybody, uh, a- and wanna just touch on a couple of things here. Um, a- and appreciate Counselor Letterman, uh, all your comments and and staff appreciates it as well. We we're working hard here. Um, in terms of a couple of things, everything comes back to money like it does with city budgets. And again, we've had these conversations, I'm just gonna remind everybody, we are solely funded by the rates that we bill our customers. City budgets get uh, state aid, they get federal aid, Water and Sewer Commission does not get that. So when we talk about um, help and where we are and who should be paying for what, um, just always remember the baseline for almost every single water and sewer utility across the country is you get what you pay for and it's not subsidized by, i- if it's part of a municipal structure, then sometimes you have tax money and you get state aid and you can push money in. But this is an independent agency, uh, where we don't collect taxes, we don't get state aid for roads or other infrastructure improvements or schools or anything like that. We we bill and and our billing supports the work that we have to do. And as Counselor Letterman said, um, you know, the last big influx of money was in the seventies and that built both of our water and our wastewater plant, um, our our modernized water and wastewater plants. So our modernized plants are now uh, you know, fifty-plus years old. So um, but we certainly have infrastructure that is over a hundred years old that is in use every single day. Um, so I I can't stress enough, and you guys have heard it through um, through the whole city council meetings we had on the rates and rate increases. Um, funny, funding and money is everything to the Water and Sewer Commission because we can't do any of the work that we're talking about without it. And so I wanna point out a couple of things um, to everybody. So since since twenty-eighteen, uh, we've probably spent, I I'm gonna say somewhere between one point five and two million dollars, and I'm just doing pencil math here, um, and I'm not looking at our budget. But e- easily, we've spent one point five million dollars on building a pilot plant, uh, doing the permitting to get the pilot plant up and going and to get a half-plant trial this winter in engineering um, fees and in the services to run that plant. That one point five million is the equivalent of a two percent rate increase. So I just want, we have about six hundred thousand dollars, equates, so between six and seven hundred thousand dollars equates to a one percent rate increase. So every time we have to do a project that's not on our books that we don't anticipate, um, or or an additional project that's outside of our status quo, six hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars is a one percent rate increase. Think about it, we have an eighty million dollar project on the horizon. We're in the process of doing multiple twenty, thirty, forty million dollar projects. We're in the middle of a hundred and twenty million dollar project on the wastewater side right now. And just remember that all that debt service piles up. And and I I I'm not being alarmist at all because I think financially, we've positioned ourselves to be eligible for the loans that we can get to to service our debt service appropriately, to stay functional and competitive and get the appropriate staff in place here uh, that knows what they're doing and remain a professional um, organization and continue to do all the right things here. So it it's, it's a challenge and you guys can see it here. It's a challenge to uh, deal with new regulations when you're dealing with fifty and a hundred-year-old treatment plants. Um, and I think anything that we can do to leverage um, the council and our newly-elected uh, representatives, um, I I I think we plan on doing that. We're not eligible, Counsel Letterman, for the MVP program because that's only municipal um, functions. And and we've lobbied uh, the state for that over the past two years and there's no movement on on that. So if you're a a water and sewer agency or an independent wastewater agency, as some of our colleagues are, you are not eligible for the MVP program. And we don't pursue um, the MVP program through the city because if we do that through the city, we're taken away from from a lot of the um, funding that you guys are trying to get independently and we would be in competition with the city. And so we let that lie where it is um, for those reasons, there's just limited dollars uh.
But we could, Josh, we we could pursue the MVP if we wanted to. We could pursue the MVP program and then grant it to you.
Yes, the 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 city could do that and we would be glad, uh, counselor, to to provide you with the information that um, that that would a- and to do the application, essentially hand it over. But, you know, my my sense is, and it's good to have this dialogue, is that it's gonna be in competition with other things that the city has a prior, a priority on. And I know that the city has gotten MVP money to do some much-needed projects that were worthy projects. And so, you know, the plight of the water and sewer utility is we're not part of a municipality. We don't receive municipal funding, we're not eligible for a lot of the programs that municipalities are. And that's just how it is. Um, so again, i- if if the council at large says, hey, you know, we want the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to give us an application to pursue an MVP grant through the city and then we're gonna pass it through, you guys let us know and uh, we'll get an application together for any variety of projects that um, fit the bill. But we've, we've spoken, um, we've spoken over the years uh, with the MVP program and have not been able to get them to push that. And it may be a legislative issue um, i- in how they were enacted that doesn't allow it to happen. Um, the next, you know, the next piece again on how the council and how our newly-elected officials can help us and our elected officials is, well, um, we're we're planning on having, uh, probably two years ago or three years ago now, it seems, uh, we had a legislative breakfast for all of our legislators where we laid out um, what we do, some initiatives. And we were pushing for something that we were trying to get passed through the legislation. And so we collected everybody together and and put on a presentation. We had um, we had the Commissioner of DEP speak and uh, we wanna do that annually. Uh, we want our legislators to know what our issues are and where they can help. And so uh, we're planning on doing that here at the turn of the new year to to have a virtual legislative uh, breakfast and do an outreach to our legislators. And and we, we've talked about it here over the past month or so. And whether we do that collectively or just Zoom meetings uh, with each of our legislators, um, there is an effort here uh, to do that. And then again, what I mentioned before is, we're gonna be reaching out here in January to all of our legislators to push for a special act um, that will give us the option to um, deliver projects in a more effective manner. So i- it's, it's not just looking at the projects themselves and what we have to do and how we fund those projects. It's also, we're also looking at how we deliver those projects. What is the most cost-effective way that we can bring those projects to bear? So we're, we're, we're juggling everything that we can in order to bring projects to bear that are cost-effective, that serve the current needs, but also serve the needs of the future going out fifty and seventy-five years, um, within understanding that, you know, the last time we saw money was fifty years ago. And then I would also add that we belong to some key national organizations, national advocacy organizations that what their e- entire existence is lobbying um, on utilities behalf, whether it's regulatory reform or whether it's financial and funding reform, uh, whatever the, whatever the issue may be. And we are very active uh, in those organizations. Uh, I'm on the board of directors on several organizations and have a hand in uh, national policymaking and national um, direction of where things are going for utilities uh, a- and and glad to have my hands in it. And then lastly, I would say, there is, um, in the next stimulus package, uh, we are aware that there is very likelihood going to be, uh, in, I think it was around seventy-five billion dollars uh, nationally in the infrastructure package that would be dedicated to water and sewer. Not the number that we wanted, um, but still a large number uh, that is in there and dedicated. And so when we say, how can we leverage that? Well, we are always in a good position because uh, we got a whole shoebox full of projects to do and we're, we're planned out for the next twenty years, uh, other than the projects that choose us, um, which happens. But we, we have a pretty good plan in place that spells out what we need to do i- in, and the sequencing of that. And so when federal stimulus money um, becomes available, we are shovel-ready always. We are never not in a position to be designing or constructing uh, projects to continue to be able to supply uh, the services that we do to not just Springfield, but to all the surrounding communities. So I think our plan kinda will speak for itself. Uh, if stimulus money becomes available, we're gonna be first in line just by the nature of the fact that we're organized and we have work lined up, uh, and we're. and we're plugged into the advocacy agencies in DC that, that, that know when the money's coming and where it's going to.
I was going to ask Josh, this is Sean Kearney here. The, the physical location of the filtration plant, that's on Cabo Mountain, am I correct? And that was, is that where that, you're going to have it, like physically, where, how does that?
Physically, it's in Westfield.
It's in Westfield? And that would service the Springfield, it would service West Springfield, Long Meadow, Lobo and?
That, the drinking water is Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Ludlow, Agawam, Springfield.
So the filtration system would regionally serve everyone regionally for this? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, so from a, from a legislative standpoint, correct. It's not just the legislators of Springfield that this impacts. It's, it's West, you know, it's Westfield, it's Ludlow.
Yeah, just from, from a political standpoint, I mean, you, I mean, we have a problem. And we have this chemical in the, in the water and, or this substance in the water. And we have a funding problem of $86 million. So you do have the political muscle, so to speak, on the ground. So I do think you have a lot of allies, not just here in the city council, but regionally, to tackle this problem and certainly look forward to working with you on it. I lose it, working with you on it. And I think this is a good first step. And again, I do believe that going forward, you know, you, you do have, we do have a, a problem that we need to tackle here in Western Massachusetts. And I think we do have the political muscle, muscle to do that. We appreciate the presentation this morning. I know you're pressed for time, unless any of my colleagues have any further questions. Adam, Mike, Jeff?
I have questions, I have questions, Sean.
Tim?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep, I do can.
Okay, thanks. I have a couple of questions. Josh, thanks for the, and everybody from the Water Department or SWSC for your information. I'm in a different place from, from what you've been talking about. It's fine, what you've been talking about is great. But I'm thinking about six months ago, when we were in some tough meetings in May after you released your projected rate, which I assume was around May 1st or something. I think the final vote of your board, if I'm not mistaken, was June 2nd. So we're six months from that again. Could you give a, a date on when you expect to release your projected rate increase or whatever rate change? Is, is that, are you looking to do that in April or May or?
Yeah, I mean, that's typically, Counselor, good to see you. That's typically in April. You know, we have a lot of irons in the, in the fire.
Okay, that, Josh, don't keep going, okay? Just answer that question. And so that's April, I know. So my next question is, I, I would like to see if you could structure a work plan of some sort that doesn't reveal any great details on budgets or anything like that. I'm not trying to look at your budget, but I would like to, to have the information you've just put here is terrific. But I'm thinking of a work plan where you show the, the projects that are underway that are going to be short-term gain, long-term gain, support the, the, the current operation. Because those are the kind of questions that we got, and we're going to get them. I don't know what your plans are relative to an increase, but we need to start getting ready for the communication side of this. Maybe that's maybe more Jamie Bartak or something. But I, people got kind of riled up about this after the, we all got emails in the summer and I'm anticipating that there'll be a little more interest in this, this coming season. So I have some ideas on how we could handle that from a management communication point of view, communication to the public. And that, that is a, that's kind of different from the science that you've just given, which is terrific. But I'm, I'm interested in how we present it as well as what you've just presented. I'm also interested in how do we present this to the public and how do we start doing that? It, it, before we know it, it'll be January, it'll be three months from that. And you're probably thinking about it on your end. So I would like to offer my time or work with anybody on presentation to the public of this info or request that you send a, a draft of a work plan to this committee or something, which talks about that. Because I don't know how many meetings I was in in March or April, I attended your board meeting. And I think that, I know that you were anticipating, I think it was, it was 9% last year or I think you were anticipating nine again this year, something of that nature. And I'm concerned, not that it doesn't need, not warranted, but we need to be able to explain it better than we did last year, I think. And I think operations versus short-term projects versus long-term projects is a way to do that. On one sheet, not with the detail, you know, one or two sheets. That's just my thought coming out, but that's where I was and spent a lot of time on in the spring. And I think that would be very helpful for this coming spring.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you, Timmy. Thanks, Counselor Allen.
Thanks.
Again, thank you, Mr. Schimmel, and thank you for the presentation. And thank you for your staff for joining us this morning. And I thought we got some constructive ideas out of this, on which way we're going to go to tackle this $86 million problem, which is a filtration plant. And, and everyone's goal is the same, affordable, safe, clean drinking water. And we look forward to working with you shoulder to shoulder as we tackle this goal. Thank you very much, Mr. Schimmel.
Thank you. Thanks for having us and we're always glad to participate.
Thanks, everyone.